Testing, testing. Thank you. If everybody could take a seat, we'll get started. The clock on the back wall is running a little slow and we are after seven. Good evening and welcome to the City of Roswell Open Forum Mayor and City Council Meeting for July 31st, 2023. I am Mayor Pro Tem Christine Hall. I would like to acknowledge the council members present: Sarah Beeson, Lee Hills, William Morthland, and Council Member Michael Palermo. Mayor Kurt Wilson and Council Member Peter Vanstrom have excused absences. I'd also like to recognize our City Attorney, Mr. Petty, and also our Chief Operating Officer, Rich Reinhardt, who will be joining us up here. At this time, I'd like to call Ms. Chaplain Dory Griggs to the City of Roswell Fire Department Chaplain to the front for the invocation moment of silence.
Holy one, we are grateful for the opportunity to gather here this evening to hear the concerns of the residents of Roswell. We give thanks for the service of esteemed veteran of Roswell, Sergeant Stephanie Litvin, and all the members of the United States military. Tonight, we celebrate the new staff and newly promoted staff of the Roswell Fire Department and ask for your protection over them and all our first responders: fire, police, 911 communications, and emergency medical services. Be with each person in this chamber through the evening: those who give feedback and those here to listen. May we all work together for the good of our community. We ask for your traveling mercies as we each leave this chamber. Amen.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask Army National Guard Sergeant E5 Stephanie Litvin to come forward and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sergeant Stephanie Litvin, I'm going to have you stay up here, and I would like council to come down for the first item of the agenda under the mayor's report, which is a reading of the proclamation for the esteemed veteran of Roswell. A word to Army National Guard Sergeant E5 Stephanie Litvin. And the audience may be seated. This is the proclamation, Office of the Mayor, Sergeant E5 Stephanie Litvin, esteemed veteran. Whereas in 2009, Stephanie Litvin joined the Pennsylvania Army National Guard and completed basic and advanced individual training at Fort Leonard Wood, Missouri, where she became a motor vehicle operator. Shortly after returning home to her duty station with the 1067th Transportation Company, Stephanie was deployed to Afghanistan with the 131st Transportation Company, 213th Area Support Group of the Pennsylvania National Guard located in Williamstown, Pennsylvania. And whereas Stephanie spent a year traveling from Bagram Airfield through remote Afghanistan to various forward operating bases, her unit rode in armored vehicles protecting the Afghans, hauling the supplies in their 40-year-old trucks to various bases such as Kabul, Jalalabad, Ghazni, and Gardes. Stephanie also had the chance to be temporarily attached to the 101st Airborne Division for a month and assisted with transporting new and armored vehicles to the COPs, which are combat outposts, and bringing the battle-damaged vehicles back to Bagram. And whereas there was one day during Stephanie's time with the 101st Airborne Division that she will never forget, a lieutenant colonel realized that her division had missed their favorite night of the week, steak night. He was able to have steaks flown in for a warm, cooked meal by some of the special operations soldiers there. That turned out to be the best steak Stephanie has ever eaten in her life. Six months into the 101st Airborne Division's tour after that mission, her unit unfortunately lost three members due to an IED explosion while protecting supply trucks traveling to a different base. And whereas after deployment, Stephanie's unit returned home to their monthly drills while waiting for interstate activations. During the 10 years Stephanie was enlisted, she was activated to help during Hurricane Sandy, transporting supplies to various locations. There were several times during the winter and bad snowstorms that her unit was activated to help transport nurses and doctors to hospitals. And whereas in 2011, the Army honorably bestowed the following awards to Sergeant E5 Stephanie Litvin: the Afghanistan Campaign Medal, Army Commendations Medal, and the Combat Action Badge. And whereas when Stephanie returned home from deployment, she started taking classes at Lehigh County Community College in Pennsylvania in order to pursue a degree in criminal justice. One of the local police officers suggested that Stephanie start working in dispatch while she was in school to become familiar with what law enforcement handles on a daily basis. In 2013, Stephanie started her career in 911. COVID brought her back home closer to her parents, and that is when she started her career with the City of Roswell's E911 Center. Although she is now retired from the military, Stephanie continues to serve Roswell citizens, saving lives one call at a time. She enjoys working for Roswell E911 because she has given many opportunities to grow and progress in her career, in a great atmosphere, with everyone helping each other when in need, and with opportunities to engage with this great community. Now, therefore, I, Christine Hall, Mayor Pro Tem and Council Member of the City of Roswell, do hereby name Army National Guard Sergeant E5 Stephanie Litvin, esteemed veteran of Roswell, and call upon all of our citizens to recognize her outstanding service to our country and our community, and that there is no higher calling than those who serve in the armed forces. A few words.
Very simple. I greatly appreciate this. This is a huge honor to me, especially here working in the City of Roswell and being recognized. And very thankful, and I can't wait to continue to serve our community here. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, and thank you for everything you do.
All right. So tonight, we are swearing in seven of our new and newly promoted team members here at the Roswell Fire Department. As Mayor Pro Tem Christine Hall said, I have the honor of serving as fire chief here for the City of Roswell and representing the men and women of the Roswell Fire Department. It's a proud moment tonight for both those we are swearing in, for their friends, their families, and really, it's a celebration for our entire community. So let me introduce them to you, and applause is welcome, by the way. First, we welcome Stephen Stoner, our newest Assistant Fire Marshal. Stephen has been a valued member of the Roswell Fire Department since 2015 and has an outstanding reputation for his hard work, dedication, and passion for the fire service. Stephen began his firefighting career in 2010 after serving in the United States Marine Corps. He previously served as a firefighter and fire investigator for DeKalb County Fire Rescue. Stephen is post-certified and is currently pursuing a bachelor's degree in criminal justice with a concentration in arson investigation. He has two children, and he and his wife are expecting twins in January. Congratulations, Stephen. Next, we welcome our newly promoted battalion chiefs. These individuals were among the historic group of 21 full-time fire captains that were sworn in last year, which was a significant milestone in the history of the Roswell Fire Department. They have demonstrated exceptional leadership and have earned their promotions to battalion chief. First up is Battalion Chief Danny Dwyer. Chief Dwyer is a 25-year veteran of the fire service. Danny began his career in 1998 with Cherokee County Fire and transitioned to Atlanta Fire Department in 2005. Danny rose through the ranks during his 16 years in Atlanta before retiring as a fire captain in 2020. Danny was hired as a captain in Roswell last year and assigned to Truck 21 on sea shift. He is accompanied by his wife Amy, daughter Claire, father Tom, mother Leslie, and stepfather Ben. Congratulations, Danny. Next up, we have Battalion Chief Jason Dooley.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sergeant Stephanie Lipman, I'm going to have you stay up here, and I would like council to come down for the first item of the agenda under the mayor's report, which is a reading of the proclamation for the esteemed veteran of Roswell. A word to Army National Guard Sergeant E5 Stephanie Lipman. And the audience may be seated. This is the proclamation, Office of the Mayor, Sergeant E5 Stephanie Lipman, esteemed veteran. Whereas in 2009, Stephanie Lipman joined the Pennsylvania Army National Guard and completed basic and advanced individual training at Fort Leonard Wood, Missouri, where she became a motor vehicle operator. Shortly after returning home to her duty station with the 1067th Transportation Company, Stephanie was deployed to Afghanistan with the 131st Transportation Company, 213th Area Support Group of the Pennsylvania National Guard located in Williamstown, Pennsylvania. And whereas Stephanie spent a year traveling from Bagram Airfield through remote Afghanistan to various forward operating bases, her unit rode in armored vehicles protecting the Afghans, hauling the supplies in their 40-year-old trucks to various bases such as Kabul, Jalalabad, Ghazni, and Gardes. Stephanie also had the chance to be temporarily attached to the 101st Airborne Division for a month and assisted with transporting new and armored vehicles to the COPs, which are combat outposts, and bringing the battle-damaged vehicles back to Bagram. And whereas there was one day during Stephanie's time with the 101st Airborne Division that she will never forget, a lieutenant colonel realized that her division had missed their favorite night of the week, steak night. He was able to have steaks flown in for a warm cooked meal by some of the special operation soldiers there. That turned out to be the best steak Stephanie has ever eaten in her life. Six months into the 101st Airborne Division's tour after that mission, her unit unfortunately lost three members due to an IED explosion while protecting supply trucks traveling to a different base. And whereas after deployment, Stephanie's unit returned home to their monthly drills while waiting for interstate activations. During the 10 years Stephanie was enlisted, she was activated to help during Hurricane Sandy, transporting supplies to various locations. There were several times during the winter and bad snowstorms that her unit was activated to help transport nurses and doctors to hospitals. And whereas in 2011, the Army honorably bestowed the following awards to Sergeant E5 Stephanie Lipman: the Afghanistan Campaign Medal, Army Commendations Medal, and the Combat Action Badge. And whereas when Stephanie returned home from deployment, she started taking classes at Lehigh County Community College in Pennsylvania in order to pursue a degree in criminal justice. One of the local police officers suggested that Stephanie start working in dispatch while she was in school to become familiar with what law enforcement handles on a daily basis. In 2013, Stephanie started her career in 911. COVID brought her back home closer to her parents, and that is when she started her career with the city of Roswell's E911 Center. Although she is now retired from the military, Stephanie continues to serve Roswell citizens, saving lives one call at a time. She enjoys working for Roswell E911 because she has given many opportunities to grow and progress in her career, in a great atmosphere, with everyone helping each other when in need, and with opportunities to engage with this great community. Now, therefore, I, Christine Hall, Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember of the city of Roswell, do hereby name Army National Guard Sergeant E5 Stephanie Lipman, esteemed veteran of Roswell, and call upon all of our citizens to recognize her outstanding service to our country and our community, and that there is no higher calling than those who serve in the armed forces.
Very simple. I greatly appreciate this. This is a huge honor to me, especially here, working in the city of Roswell and being recognized, and very thankful, and I can't wait to continue to serve our community here. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, and thank you for everything you do.
So tonight, we are swearing in seven of our new and newly promoted team members here at the Roswell Fire Department. As Mayor Pro Tem Christine Hall said, I have the honor of serving as fire chief here for the city of Roswell and representing the men and women of the Roswell Fire Department. It's a proud moment tonight for both those we are swearing in, for their friends, their families, and really, it's a celebration for our entire community. So let me introduce them to you, and applause is welcome, by the way. First, we welcome Stephen Stoner, our newest Assistant Fire Marshal. Stephen has been a valued member of the Roswell Fire Department since 2015 and has an outstanding reputation for his hard work, dedication, and passion for the fire service. Stephen began his firefighting career in 2010 after serving in the United States Marine Corps. He previously served as a firefighter and fire investigator for DeKalb County Fire Rescue. Stephen is post-certified and is currently pursuing a bachelor's degree in criminal justice with a concentration in arson investigation. He has two children, and he and his wife are expecting twins in January. Next, we welcome our newly promoted battalion chiefs. These individuals were among the historic group of 21 full-time fire captains that were sworn in last year, which was a significant milestone in the history of the Roswell Fire Department. They have demonstrated exceptional leadership and have earned their promotions to battalion chief. First up is Battalion Chief Danny Dwyer. Chief Dwyer is a 25-year veteran of the fire service. Danny began his career in 1998 with Cherokee County Fire and transitioned to Atlanta Fire Department in 2005. Danny rose through the ranks during his 16 years in Atlanta before retiring as a fire captain in 2020. Danny was hired as a captain in Roswell last year and assigned to Truck 21 on sea shift. He is accompanied by his wife Amy, daughter Claire, father Tom, mother Leslie, and stepfather Ben. Next up, we have Battalion Chief Jason Dooley. Chief Dooley has an impressive 30-year public safety career where he's held every rank from firefighter to deputy chief. Jason holds a Bachelor of Science from the University of North Georgia and a Master's Degree in Public Administration from the University of Phoenix. Jason holds numerous certifications, including the Georgia Fire Chief designation, Fire Officer 4, and is a Georgia Certified Emergency Manager. Jason is accompanied by his wife of 20 years, Rachel. Next, we have Battalion Chief Christopher Cavender. Chief Cavender is an 18-year veteran of the fire service. Christopher came to Roswell after serving at DeKalb County Fire as a captain. Christopher is accompanied by his wife Joanna, their son Bryce, his mother and stepfather Maria and Jose, and his sister Christine, which is a testament to the profound impact that a supportive family can have on someone's success. Next, we welcome a new member to Team RFD, Dwayne Campbell, Battalion Chief of Emergency Chief Campbell is a 31-year fire service veteran. In 1992, Dwayne was hired at the Cobb County Fire Department and worked through the ranks, retiring as a captain earlier this year. Dwayne has worked several part-time jobs through the years, including Children's Healthcare of Atlanta and a flight paramedic for air methods. Dwayne holds a Master's in Business Administration, and joining him tonight is his wife Courtney of 31 years, his daughter Stormy, and his one-year-old granddaughter Hadley. Next, we have our newly promoted Division Chief of Professional Standards, Alex Robles. Chief Robles has been with the city since March of 2019. As the Division Chief of Professional Standards, he has the responsibility of overseeing all human resources functions, as well as the EMS and training divisions. His leadership and commitment to excellence have significantly impacted our organization, fostering a culture of professionalism and high standards. Finally, we welcome Deputy Chief Brian Wolfe. Chief Wolfe is a 27-year fire service veteran who began his career with the Roswell Fire Department in 1996. He spent 25 years at Gwinnett County promoting through the ranks to Assistant Chief of Business Services before his retirement in May. Chief Wolfe obtained his Bachelor's in Political Science from the University of Richmond and a Master of Science in Safety, Security, and Emergency Management with a dual concentration in fire administration and emergency management from Eastern Kentucky University. He's also a graduate of the National Fire Academy's Executive Fire Officer Program. He's happily married to his wife Nancy of 25 years, and he has two sons, Chris, who recently graduated from KSU with an accounting degree, and Joey, who is a junior at River Ridge High School in Woodstock. Council, I ask if you join us towards the edges of the dais. Now, on behalf of the Roswell Fire Department, I extend my sincerest congratulations, gentlemen, and I'm confident that you will continue to serve our community with the highest level of professionalism, pride, and compassion. So before Mayor Pro Tem Christine Hall administers the oath of office, it's my privilege to invite the family up to do the penning. So come on up. Yeah, so basically, when you are... Welcome to join the fire department or promoted to the next rank, your badge changes. Your badge signifies your department and your rank within the department. So the penning is something that we like the family to do, or those closest, because the badge is closest to our heart, and we like the family to pin the badge on them. Remember, it goes down, not straight in.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, President.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support and protect the Constitution.
Protect the Constitution.
Of the United States and of the state of Georgia. And that I will bear true faith, loyalty, and allegiance to the same. That I am entitled to hold office under the Constitution.
Under the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
Laws of the state of Georgia.
And the Charter of the city of Roswell.
Charter of the city of Roswell.
And that I will faithfully perform all the duties.
All the duties.
Of the position of... State your position?
Position.
In the city of Roswell.
City of Roswell.
Upon which I am about to enter, so help me God.
I'm about to enter, so help me God.
As we get ready to take the photos, I just want to say how extremely proud we are of our fire department, our first responders, of our chief Joe Panino, and our entire city of Roswell Public Safety Organization. They're here to meet the number-one need of our residents, and that's safety, and we couldn't be in safer hands. This is really, really an accomplishment. This is something that this mayor and Ros... I mean, the current mayor and council, two years ago, basically made a commitment to the city to start or to begin a full-time fire department. We were part-time and subject to a lot of risk. And I'd like to recognize two of my council members. Our current liaison, Councilmember Beeson, became liaison four or five months ago. She's been working with the fire department since then. And I'd also like Councilmember Hills, who was the liaison during when we laid this groundwork, to maybe say a few words and tell us a little bit about how we got here and where we're going.
Thank you, Pro Tem Christine Hall. There's so much to say, and I won't keep you with all the details. Those are kept right in this head, right here, all the details. But one of my campaign promises was public safety, and it was a slam dunk with the entire four of us that were elected a year ago. And delighted to have Councilmember Beeson carrying the baton this year. I was the liaison last year. But we all knew, and I believe currently all know, that it was too heavy a burden financially to carry in one year to convert from part-time to full-time. So we charged Chief Panino with coming up with a strategy, and just short of magic, how to phase this part-time to full-time in over five years. And when I say he got creative, I don't mean cooking the books, you know, cooking like fire, but absolutely looking at minutia, like what time of the year we can do budget adjustments, and when we could have folks start hiring before that and plan for the budget adjustments. So that's going rather smoothly. And as you can see, we have some of our 21 cream of the crop that were sworn in less than a year ago are moving up within the ranks right now. And of course, we welcome new, fresh blood, and we also love promoting from within. So this is a huge honor. I'm proud to be served by all of you, and I couldn't be more proud. So congratulations, and we're very blessed in Roswell.
Thank you. Councilmember Beeson, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. I just want to say thank you. I want to say thank you not only to the gentleman behind us for giving everything to the city of Roswell, joining our team for our new people who have joined us, but also for staying with our team. But most importantly, I want to say thank you, because there's some families sitting out there. Every single day, you tell these gentlemen goodbye, and you hope they came back the same way that they left you that morning. And I understand with coming on this role as liaison for public safety, how much sacrifice goes into it, not only for our first responders, in this case, our firefighters, but sacrifice that goes on behalf of the family. I know what it's like to have your child, your brother, your son, your husband... None of the women are currently up right now, but wives as well, be able to look at them and know that they're serving something so much larger than themselves. And that's a sacrifice that not only they make, but it's a sacrifice that you make as a family member as well. So from the city of Roswell to you, thank you.
Thank you. Photo op. Chief, would you like to say anything?
No. I've had the opportunity to work with these gentlemen for quite some time now, so they've heard plenty of my speeches. So we'll get a photo op with Mayor Pro Tem and council, and then we will go out front with friends and family and continue the photos.
So last up on the mayor's report is upcoming events in the city. And Councilmember Hills, would you please give us an update?
Yes. Mayor Pro Tem Hall, thank you very much. We are going to keep beating this drum because we want more and more additions to www.roswell365.com. This is actually our liaison for communications is Councilmember Beeson, and she's been working diligently with community relations on getting this up and running, and it is full throttle now. If you want to know what's going on in Roswell, what's happening, places to go, if you have company in town and want to take them to show off our great city, please take a look at this website. Also, if you're a merchant or someone here in Roswell, a resident, that has a community-based event, you may submit your entry on there, and I don't mean like a contest, I mean submit information, so that you can post that on the website, and then that's free to all for all to see. Also, want to point out that Friday, August 4, we have Reels and Wheels at Riverside Park in the Grassy Knoll. Food trucks start arriving at 5:00, the movie starts at 7:00, and the movie is Minions: Rise of Gru. Hope you'll join there, should be fun. Then Saturday, August 5, Art Center West, which is by Lita Thompson Park, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., this is a slip-and-slide extravaganza. So if you would like to have your littles or medium-sized people come and slip and slide, the free event will offer three slides. You can slide down one of the two 200-foot slides or slip down the 50-foot slide. I think adults can go with their parents? I don't know. I think so, I think so. So wear your water-friendly attire. Also, on the 5th of August, Saturday, we have at 7:30 a.m. at Centennial High School, the 5K Road Race in memory of Jamie McHenry. Excuse me, Jamie McHenry. This is a community event with live music on the race route to keep you moving along. Proceeds will benefit youth athletics scholarships, character awards, and school improvements. Again, this is at Centennial High School. Visit www.liveforjamie.net, that's L-I-V-E-F-O-R-J-A-M-I-E.net, to see how the proceeds have been used in the past to give back to youth athletics. On Friday, August 11, we have Music on the Hill. That's from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. right over here on the grounds of City Hall. Beautiful area. We are having land office business, large swaths of people coming in and enjoying themselves on the lush lawn. BJ Willbanks is a prolific and extremely talented songwriter-producer and creates music that fuses the roots of Americana, Motown, funk, blues, and country into an intoxicating blend that is all his own. If you'd like to know more about his music, visit www.bjwillbanks.com/music. By the way, people dance at this. It's okay to come and have fun, and you can bring your cooler of treats and snacks and just enjoy yourself. Really, really fun. Finally, August 13, from 2:30 to 4:00 at Riverside Park, we have the Free Sundays in the park, and it's... This is the Cool Blue Jazz Band Concert. This is Latin rhythms in the park, cha-cha, tango, samba, and bosa. So I encourage you to check out www.roswell365.com, see what else is going on in your neck of the woods here in Roswell, and hopefully, we will see you out and about. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Councilmember Hills. And there is one more event. It is a little bit further out there. I'm going to ask Councilmember Palermo to talk about it.
Yeah, absolutely. And so Live for Jamie, definitely a great, great cause. I've run that one before. We have another race, which I believe is Saturday, August 19, which is the alien races on Riverside, and those do benefit our public safety as well. So those do benefit our police department as well, for any of you that do want to try running it at nighttime with the aliens.
Thank you. And we've been hearing some about aliens in the news lately as well. That concludes the mayor's report. Now I'm opening it up to public comment for open-mic night. Thank you all for being here. If you would like to speak, please make sure to fill out a comment card with your name and address, so that we have a record of all speakers at the meeting. Please place the cards at the receptacle next to the podium. There is a maximum time of five minutes for each speaker. When you come forward, please state your name and where you live for the record. This evening is for all of us on council to listen to you. A member of the city administrator's office will be taking notes, and the city administrator will be reaching out to you to answer any specific questions or concerns. Who would like to be the first speaker? I think this gentleman did have his paper raised first. And Mr. Johnson, if you would state your information for the record, please.
My name is David Johnson. I live at 3,000 Roxburgh Drive in the Country Club of Roswell neighborhood. Roxburgh Drive and Ascot Land are the two main roads in our neighborhood. Roxburgh is a 2.2-mile loop that, when you walk on it, it's like walking in a state park. Beautiful old trees, manicured yards, deer, rabbits, and an occasional turtle on the road that you have to get up with a shovel. This 700-home neighborhood that I call home is truly one of the best places to live. However, walking on Roxburgh or Ascot is not safe for anyone, as you'll see shortly. A traffic study in 2014 shows 1,200 cars a day go on Roxburgh, front of my house. 15% of them travel faster than 39 miles per hour. That's a car going over 39 miles per hour every eight minutes in a subdivision. Not a road with a double-yellow lines, a subdivision. We also know that Roxburgh is a public street that is maintained by the city. The city actually classifies it as a local road that acts as a collector, which means Roxburgh has more traffic than it was designed for. Our neighbors have sent numerous emails to our elected officials over the years complaining about the dangers of our neighborhood streets. One in January states she no longer feels comfortable having kids in our front yard at all. Having cars speeding through the neighborhood with no sidewalks feels dangerous. Another email reads, "Absence of an accident does not equal absence of risk." It just means we've been lucky. Well, on April 1 this year, around 6:30 in the morning, our luck ran out. If you have children, cover their eyes. These women were walking on Roxburgh inside the edge lines of our neighborhood that the city installed in the right direction when they got obliterated by that car. Myself, the HOA, and many of my neighbors in this room have been pleading to the city for sidewalks to prevent this tragedy, yet the city did nothing and continues to do nothing. It's hard for me to... It's hard for me to watch this video and then hear the words spoken by our elected officials. Mayor Wilson in May this year, which is disappointing he's not here tonight, stated that budgets are all about priorities, and I see and I've heard from a lot of residents that repaving is a priority, and as I mentioned earlier, sidewalks are a priority. At a recent Canton Street Promenade meeting, Councilwoman Hill stated she loves walkable neighborhoods and commercial districts. Councilman Palermo has stated numerous times his love for sidewalks and cutting other budgetary items to build more sidewalks. Councilman Palermo and Councilwoman Hall in 2020 voted on ordinance that states Roswell is a walkable city that provides itself as a safe, safe, accessible community for children, families. Those women were seniors and individuals with disabilities. The real kicker, though, is Councilwoman Hall lettered to her neighborhood stating she's an advocate for sidewalk, as the city is going to spend $16 million outside of her neighborhood to build a path that takes them to Canton Street. A project rates 15th and 60th on the current sidewalk matrix and being put ahead of numerous projects on the east. These statements show that our city officials do care about pedestrian safety on Canton Street or on their streets, but not on my street, not on your street. If you live in one of the numerous neighborhoods of Roswell that have cars flying down the roads, the city does not care unless you're lucky enough to have an elected official as a neighbor. Maybe one day we will. The status quo is acceptable to them, and they'd rather see your family get hit like those women in the video than do anything that might hurt them politically. But I lost my survey results. Oh, well, I was going to show you the survey results, but the status quo will never be acceptable to me or my neighborhood. They actually have done numerous surveys that sidewalks are desired and wanted. In fact, myself and many of the people here knocked on 111 homes on the affected path in 2021. 65% of them approved of it. Our neighborhood is not private, like the mayor told the press last Thursday. Building sidewalks will have to be at the city's permission, not at the HOAs. The excuses from the city are always the same, expensive, too difficult, or my favorite is you bought a house with the sidewalks, so live with it. Then why are we spending $16 million for a multi-use trail in front of your neighborhood? What more is it going to take for you guys to invest in our neighborhoods? You take our tax dollars from our neighborhood and spend it everywhere else, and I'm done. What evidence do you need for better streets? Next Monday, I will hold a hand with my six-year-old and five-year-old as we walk to the bus stop on Roxburgh Drive. Are they next? Are they next? What child in this picture do you have are you willing to sacrifice for your political career? You have six months left. Help me. You're the sidewalk guy. Let's do it.
Next, with the next speaker, in, right there. Thank you. I guess, can I put this on here? Is that on this one? The OH button. Overhead, where is it? I'm looking for it. Sorry.
I just got a lesson on this a few minutes ago.
Thank you. That doesn't, does it show? No. Oh, there it is. I guess it goes like that. My name's Katie Ballou. I live at 105 Nancy Trail in Roswell, and I'm here to speak on behalf of revisiting the project of the Roswell City Green. I will tell you that this project seems minor relative to what you shared. But it is, it is family-oriented. It is family-oriented. So I went to a Roswell Next meeting in May, and there was conversations with restaurant panel of owners' restaurants in the area, and the conversation shifted to the Canton Street Promenade, the street closure. And then I kind of innocently stood up and I said, hey, what about Roswell City Green? Can we revisit that project? And the enthusiasm that I got, the response I got at that meeting was pretty overwhelming. I had so many people come to me and say, we feel this is part of the piece of the puzzle for downtown Roswell, and we'd love to help and support. Ryan Pernice and I hosted an event, kickoff event, these are all volunteers. So I just want to make that clear. There's no politics associated with that in that regard. We don't have any financial backing. We're just residents in Roswell that feel that it's time for Roswell's city campus to have a green. We got pretty far in 2017. There was a plan, mayor and city council were moving forward on that. They decided to table it. Subsequent mayors and council did not take up the torch. You know, at that time, we would have been on the leading edge of kind of that type of enhancement to our city campus. We've seen cities throughout the country, throughout our area, add this element to their campus and realize the economic impact and the community impact. I think one thing we can pretty unilaterally say is that Canton Street is geared for adults. There's not a lot of activities for families and children. You go to dinner, you really have to, all you can do is walk up the sidewalk. A lot of families told me they go to Alpharetta to enjoy the splash pad, have dinner there, stay there, because there is a family-centric activity and space for them to enjoy. So we're really hoping that we can revisit this. The whole purpose of this group is just to lift awareness to the mayor and city council that we believe there's a need for this enhancement and that there is residents that support it. We're in a stronger position than a lot of communities that achieve this. We already own the land. I think every city planner, every urban planner that's come to Roswell, which we've had many, have all unequivocally said, you guys have got amazing land here that you need to capitalize on, that will actually have a domino effect to invite private investment in this corridor, in addition to just providing another space for our community to gather. Contrary to some comments you'll see, the plan and our vision is not to clear-cut the area. Certainly additional trees would be removed to enhance the green space, the open space, and provide for hopefully an interactive fountain that would be for families and children to enjoy and activate the space. But we want to incorporate tree canopy around the green, and if trees are removed, hopefully enhance it with additional trees. The problem is that we've kind of gone this route before, where we debate the death of 1,000 cuts until the next recession hits, and then nothing happens. So I really hope that the elements of the green that we're talking about, you can see, this is concept, these are renderings, so it's not set in stone in any way. A lot of conversation was about the war memorials that we have on the property, which are revered and loved. And we would certainly incorporate the veterans to come in, and if the plan is and the strong feeling is that those memorials have to stay in place as they are, that can be incorporated in the plan. We would, again, collaborate. It's not, no edict to be forced down the community's throat. We're looking for the memorials to stay, expanded walkway to city parking behind, I think that's sorely needed. The plan had all that in place, public restrooms, and the music venue. We already enjoy music on the hill, that can be enhanced. Over and over again, I hear Councilman Palermo say, our goal is to be the number-one family city in America. And yet, in our downtown district, we do not have a family-centric activity or space. Katie, thank you. I'm sorry, we're going to keep a hard five minutes. There's a lot of people here today. Thank you. That's just fine. Who would like to be next?
Hello. I will fill one of these cards out. I am Lindsay Coats, and I am at 715 Old Park Place. Tonight, I'm going to speak about something that I've written mayor and council about previously a couple of times, and that is transparency in our local government. Transparency in local government is a fundamental pillar of a healthy and thriving democracy. It plays a pivotal role in ensuring accountability and trust between elected officials and the citizens that they serve. When government actions, decisions, and processes are open and accessible to the public, it fosters an environment where citizens can actively participate in governance, voice their concerns, and hold officials accountable for their actions. Transparent local governments are more likely to make informed decisions and fair decisions that reflect the interests and needs of all of their constituents. They are less likely to be susceptible to hidden agendas and corruption. However, we've had quite the opposite for the last year and a half. Last January, Mary Wilson stated in a public forum, he didn't plan for anything to be put on the agenda that he didn't have 100% of the votes to pass. That means that all the time citizens spoke the evening of a vote, their words were meaningless and wouldn't be taken into account. Then there's meetings in what's been dubbed the bunker, in the mayor's personal home, where there are no records of who is in attendance or what is being discussed. There was a trip to another state on our taxpayer money, only for it to leak that at that meeting, a list of so-called enemies was created. Enemies, that's what was dubbed, your neighbors, that's what was, you called your neighbors. Trying to appoint, then there was trying to appoint a council member who vacated their seat when it was plainly against our city charter. You've made it nearly impossible to file an open records request anonymously, a right under the U.S. Constitution, and now people are, people filing could be discouraged from filing for fear of retribution. We've also had ORRs returned, unfulfilled, when there are known communications between the parties. The mayor has been using his personal, and admitted to it, his personal email address for city business, and when making ORR requests, it's on the honor system at this point if he's using a personal email system. Certain council members are being left off pertinent emails multiple times by multiple of you. Berating emails to city staff and partner organizations at all hours of the morning, condescending and scolding remarks to citizens speaking at various council meetings, deciding to close Canton Street without a single conversation with residents or businesses, including those most impacted, trying to circumvent a council vote to do that, not allowing tax-paying businesses to speak at meetings, not putting a single Canton Street business owner on the task force, voting members, voting on those members behind closed doors when all boards and commissions are supposed to be a public vote. Then we have contractors being used without going through a public RFP process. The mayor is on camera in multiple meetings stating he's not a fan of transparency and realizing it cost him reelection, which begs the question, of what all are you trying to hide? This is an extremely poor pattern of behavior, unbecoming of anyone, let alone an elected official. It's certainly not what I thought I was voting for in November 2020, and now I regret that decision wholeheartedly. Nearly all of you up there have yet to call out this bad behavior. You allow it to keep happening, and it's sowing divide in our community, and it's sowing a lack of trust within our community. As a nation, we are divided politically, I get it, but that doesn't need to be the case at this hyper-local level of government. We need to be able to trust our elected officials, and by engaging citizens and businesses in a collaborative effort, you'll ultimately lead to more civic engagement, which should be the goal. You want to create raving fans, then engage them, include them. It's past time to start holding Roswell officials accountable to all the citizens of Roswell, not just the ones that voted for you, and it's for the betterment of our community.
Thank you, Lindsay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The gentleman in the back.
I'm Bob Evers. I'm the HOA president of Willow Springs, where the accident occurred, you guys just saw earlier. First, want to thank all the folks here from our neighborhood and others who are here to support us. The victims are both in a wheelchair and could not attend, they wanted to. They did give a statement to the press. Certainly, the bottom line was they would never walk on a road again that doesn't have a sidewalk, in a neighborhood that doesn't have a sidewalk. So they didn't even live in our neighborhood, they live in John's Creek, but they found our three-and-a-half-mile loop, you know, so beautiful and appealing, they did it. The people from Stutterford, from Alpharetta and Thornbury, they all walk our loop because it's an amazing loop. And, you know, upfront, I'll say thanks to you guys. I'm HOA president, you know, that's, some people say the minor league system for what you guys do. And I know it's a lot of work, and there's no pay, you know, thank you for doing it. I mean, it's unbelievable, unbelievably complex and hard work, but, you know, I am scratching my head right now, like, you know, what is going on? Why is this so hard that, you know, you know, Mike and I met six years ago over coffee about sidewalks. We've been talking about this, I've been, you know, driven, I have four kids, wife jogs, walks, bikes the neighborhood, and I knew this would, this day would come when somebody was going to get hurt. We predicted it. It was easy to predict, and it's going to happen again. So I just don't understand why, you know, we've been given the runaround and not been able to just simply vote on trying to pay for our own sidewalks. So I do want to clarify, you know, for everybody in here who doesn't live in our neighborhood, we don't want your tax money. We're not asking for anything. We just want to be able to put a sidewalk in your right of way, and, yeah, we need your help. I mean, I'm, you know, I'm not a construction guy. We shouldn't have to be in the job of improving public safety. So I'm just really baffled why this is so hard and why it's taken, you know, and still, I mean, we met with Lee and showed her the video and said, well, here it is. You know, now are you going to work with us on an ordinance? We gave you the ordinance from Brookhaven that is a perfect blueprint for a neighborhood that wants to retrofit and not put a burden on other taxpayers. If you have to hire two people to run the project, charge us. There's no cost to you guys. Why in the world wouldn't you let us do that? Respect the will of the majority. We have 80% of the people in the neighborhood who've previously surveyed saying they want sidewalks and they will pay for it. It's just unbelievable, we're here tonight. This was all avoidable. These women getting hit was avoidable. Us spending our night and wasting your time was avoidable. So it's just, you know, please work with us, and, you know, I don't want to make Roswell look bad. We didn't want to do the media, you know, bug the media and get everybody involved, but this is, you know, what else can we do? You just keep saying no to us. So, you know, we're simply asking to vote. We've given you the ordinance, and we're willing to pay for it if our, I don't even know if our people are going to, you know, approve sidewalks anymore. I think they will, especially after what just happened, and you can see the turnout tonight. So anyways, please, please do your job, and, you know, let's be, let's be a role model in Georgia for cooperation between a subdivision that's old and, you know, the law is now to have sidewalks. We're trying to pay to get current and up to code, which I know is walkability and sidewalks are in your, in your charter. So just please help us out and, you know, let's, let's work together and be a role model and, you know, help save other lives in both Roswell and in the state. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Evers. Thank you. With the black, black book. You right there? Yes.
My name is Frederick Weyeno. I'm a resident of Roswell, Longwater Cove, at the far end of the city. I'm going to start with a quick show of hand. How many here on this panel here or in the audience are members? audience are members of the Redneck Yacht Club? Ever heard of it? Okay, well, the founding member is actually there, so that's great. The Redneck Yacht Club is a small enclave between the Riverwalk and the river, in the middle of Azalea Park. The property is unkempt, the grass is growing wild, it's an attractive nuisance due to the flimsy plastic banner that purports to be the fence. In today's vernacular, redneck is primarily defined as an unsophisticated white male. In most circles, it's considered a racist slur. Over a year ago, actually, almost a year and a half ago, when I stood here at this podium, when the city council was reviewing the proposal for the charter of commissioners, members of the various commissions, I stood here at this podium asking that an amendment be made to ensure that the members of the commissions would be held to the same criteria of behavior and ethics as elected officials. I'm not sure whether this was changed or not, be as it may. I'm not asking here for the city to remove the two signs that are on the side of the property. It's a First Amendment issue that provides the property owner the right to free speech, however disgusting it is. However, you, 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 you are complacent and complicit by, of the disparagement of thousands of Roswell citizens and visitors who use the River Trail every day by allowing this property owner to stay on the Transportation Commission. This property owner who is, in my opinion, antagonistic, divisive, and racist. So, what I'm asking you here today is to have the courage to stand up to the disparagement of the thousands of citizens Roswell that you purport to represent and to boot the property owner from the Transportation Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Frederick. The gentleman with the shiny black book, please state your name and address.
Sure. Judge McClure, East Roswell. So, good evening, there and counsel, or I guess just counsel. Unfortunately, my remarks and I guess questions were primarily for the mayor, nothing against you all, y'all are great, and they were mostly positive and actually quite encouraging in these tough times. Barring some sort of emergency, it's disappointing that he's not here. I came here straight from work, long day at work. I'm here, you know, if you don't want to face the public, then perhaps public service might not be your calling. But residents didn't come here to listen to me, bloviate to an empty dais, so, I yield my time, please give it to Willow Springs, they deserve it much more than me. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else? Would this gentleman right here in the front?
Good evening, everyone, I'm Mark Owens, I'm a resident of Roswell for the past 24 years. I have seen Roswell grow, I have seen Roswell flourish, I want to give a shout out to what you folks have done with our fire department, I think you guys have done a pretty darn good job in that respect, and I think overall, you all do a pretty darn good job, and I thank you for that. However, what I would like to see as a resident of Roswell and a voter of Roswell is that we passed bond issue, I guess it was around 2003, 2004, and that's how we got Leated Thompson Park or parks thereof, and we have a great recreational area to hang out in, so to speak. We just passed another bond issue in November, and that gave everybody the opportunity within the city to boost the fire department, boost the police department, boost public safety. But it also included a parking garage for downtown Roswell, wonderful, good job. However, we're kind of just, we're stuck, kind of stale. We also passed Parks and Recreation. I am part of a steering committee for the Roswell Green. It was a long-planned, well-thought-out project that kind of went stale. I, as a resident, I as a voter, I as someone who is a booster of the city of Roswell, would love to see that come to fruition, and I think that it would be incumbent upon all of you to sit back and take another hard look at it. We, I think it would really behoove us. The farmer's market used to be here in front of City Hall, it's a beautiful city hall, I've never seen anything like it in my life. What do we do? We move farmer's market down the street to a church, bring it back here. You have the Youth Day Parade, last year I took my grandkids to that, my sons came to see it. All your city employees were just so proud to demonstrate what you guys do here for the taxpayers. Think about what you could do with the green at Roswell and how much it would mean to the city and the residents of Roswell to have someplace to come and hang out. Maybe Canton Street is not the answer, I agree it should be looked at, but I also do believe that what you need to possibly think about is going back and revisit this green at Roswell, I think it would mean a lot to the city. I'm not going to talk about what other cities have done, this is my town, I want to live here, I enjoy it here, all the people that are here at this meeting that support it are here. Think about it, please. Thanks for your support.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I'm Sandra Wheeler. I don't know which one it is, yeah.
Whatever you do, don't push that button.
Okay. All right, thank you, appreciate that. Okay, my property, or her property backs up to mine, this is 1300 North Coleman Road. Would you want your house to back up, or have property back up to your house like that? If you were trying to sell, your value is going to go down, the neighborhood is going down. This has been in legal for the last five to six years, okay? We've spoken with code enforcement, they refer it to legal. Gary here tried to get an appointment with the city attorney, the paralegal said that his calendar was full, information was forwarded to the paralegal. In turn, they sent it to Community Development, but yet you talk to code enforcement and they refer you back to legal. So, it's going around in a vicious circle, and like I said, this has been going on for five or six years. I would really like to know what the holdup is. Has this individual been warned? Has this individual been cited? I know at one time, the city had someone that would do yard work in case someone would not take care of their yard, and ignored the citation, and then the charge was added to their utility bill. Whether the city still has that or not, I'm not too sure. Has this individual been cited? And if so, has she paid the fee? I know of some instances with this homeowner. What I'd like to know is how does the city plan to handle this, or do they? Okay, if they don't plan on handling this situation and getting this property cleaned up, who can you refer us to? Can you refer us to Fulton County, the state? Who? The right-of-way on North Coleman has been mowed a few times, but the right-of-way on Noel Woods Drive has not. As you can see, there are a number of trees that are growing up and stuff on that right-of-way. All I'm asking is, like I said, this started with the burnt fence back in 2016 or 2017, and it has just continued.
And so, Rich, this is one for, with me being over code enforcement, I'm going to want to reengage with legal, and so...
Just the same.
So, I was telling Rich a meeting that we're going to have to have tomorrow with legal and code enforcement, so we'll definitely look at this, I know there was a lawsuit involved with that, with that house for years, but I definitely will make sure that code enforcement is giving you better answers, and we'll work on that tomorrow.
Well, like I said, this has been going on for years, and I let it slide for a while because I thought it'd be under insurance with the fire, with the fence, but like I said, this is totally getting out of place. And they talk about a sidewalk and wanting to make the community nice, well, what about property?
And we'll, I'd like to have a separate, separate follow-up meeting, probably later this week, with staff and with you, if that's all right.
I would appreciate it, and get back with us?
Yes.
All right.
If you can leave your contact information with someone in the back right there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Palermo. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Wheeler. Mr. Yow, your hand is up.
I'm Jason Yow, longtime Roswell resident. First, I'd just like to say it's absolutely shameful that the mayor does not deign to come to two open forums in a row. I don't know why he wants to be mayor, if he doesn't want to face the music for the consequences of his policies. These people were very concerned about sidewalks, and I have talked about sidewalks a great deal on the Transportation Commission, and one of the last things that we addressed was the residual portion of Oxbow Road that was not part of the $18 million extravaganza. And my recommendation was to bring in the curb line, reduce the lane widths, create a wider sidewalk, and some landscape separation, and instead, we get these bollards that push the cars closer to the sidewalk, which is hardly a safety enhancement. Our DOT personnel told us that there wasn't money for this, and I said, oh, I disagree, there's a ton of money sitting there for projects like this. But, the problem with our TSPLOST is that the way it's written, until the TSPLOST Tier One projects are complete, the money that's been allocated for the Tier Two and Tier Three projects can't be touched. So, you've got a tremendous amount of money sitting in the form of a lockbox for Big Creek Parkway, a road to nowhere, I believe there's still $59 million just for that, not to mention the residual money that's left over for the Tier Two and Tier Three projects, and that is 100% on us. Cost overruns, we're going to own it. It's unlike the Gateway where we're limited to $3 million, but we got to design it, another It's time to call Big Creek. When Big Creek was proposed, the bridge over 400 for the express lanes onto Grimes Bridge was not in the pipeline, at least not in the public eye. Now that we have that connection to the east side, Big Creek Parkway becomes even more of a road to nowhere. It needs to be abandoned, you need to take that big chunk of money and redeploy it for sidewalks there, for sidewalks there, for sidewalks all over the city. $60 million will buy an awful lot of sidewalks, and I'd like to address, comment the man made about the Redneck Yacht Club. Yes, I own that property. In 2014, the city unlawfully downzoned it from residential to a new zoning category, conservation. There's not a whole lot of use in conservation. I have tried to work with the city to do nice things with the property, and the city has basically said, no. And my response was, if you don't want nice things there, you get the Redneck Yacht Club. So, of all the uses that I can have there, I got one permitted use, other ones are conditional uses, which, conservation, I'm not cutting the grass, that's conservation. I'm actually, when you, if you're going to, and you guys weren't here for that zoning, but if you're going to zone things for conservation and people do it, you can't complain, you can't go, well, that's not what we meant. Conservation doesn't mean cutting the grass, conservation means letting the grass grow. I'm going to rezone the property to build houses, because I'm tired of waiting to come to an accommodation with the city in 2014. No, it's 2016, the city announced the River Park Master Plan, I wasn't, I wasn't included in the consultations, I asked the consultant at the public meeting, why didn't you, what did the owner say? You know, you've got this gore in the middle of Azalea Park, and he was told, we were told by the city not to talk to the owner. Big mistake. I'm a stakeholder there, and if you think you're going to take it through eminent domain, buckle up, because you will lose, and you will regret it. It will be a disaster for the city, should you go that route, because I'm not selling it for a pittance, and I'm not the guy to toy with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yow.
My name is Joan Hostetter. I live in Willow Springs, Roswell. A couple of comments have indicated that we're asking for money for the sidewalks. We are not. I believe that the sidewalks are a matter of life and death. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hostetter. Who would like to come up next?
Hi, my name's Janet Russell, and I reside in Roswell, Georgia since March of 1973, so I'm probably the oldest resident in the room. I've seen a lot of things happen, good and bad. Tonight, I want to tell you that we live in a really great city. I'm sorry everybody's so unhappy, but you haven't walked in my shoes yet, and I'm really sorry that people that came here for their special interest left, once their special interest was discussed, because it's all interconnected, it's all interconnected. We live in a country of the people, by the people, for the people, who show up all the time, not just at open mic night, and it's really a drudgery, but you got to do it. I want to say first of all, that it's been a really hot summer, as we know, and we are so lucky because we have 28 parks in this town, 1,000 acres, and we are the envy of every city in metro Atlanta. All summer, I have met families who specifically chose Roswell to move to, seniors, elderly, young families, singles. Why? Because Roswell is a real place, it isn't a manufactured place like some of our nearby neighbors. Now, I realize that people like to think everything is better somewhere else, and that's why we have roads. You can drive there and visit them, and come back to your house. Sidewalks, I think this is funny, because 50 years ago, when city council used to meet where the visitor center was, I actually made an ordinance, suggested that the city, we were a country town of 5,000 people, make an ordinance that every time a school, subdivision, shopping center, park was built, it be connected by a sidewalk. Imagine what Roswell would look like today if they had just listened to me, I was told to go home and make cookies, and I don't say that lightly. However, I want to talk about the employees of our Parks Department, because it's been brutally hot, and while we all drive around in our air-conditioned cars to go in our air-conditioned offices to drink our iced coffees, these guys are out on those little gators all over the parks in this brutal heat, making sure our parks are clean and maintained, and that is part of our mental health. And I hope that Mr. Leatherman acknowledges those people, maybe gives them a little, what do we call it? When I was in Vietnam, we called it combat pay. Maybe they ought to get combat pay, a little bit of a boost this summer, because they're busting their asses so we can have a nice park. That said, I think there's been a little misinformation tonight regarding the city green, and if anyone wearing green would like to talk to me, I was working with the original committee in 2015. I helped the committee build the Faces of War Memorial. I have a copy of the last page of the sales agreement between the Skinner family and the city when we purchased this land, and I can tell you that the last sentence is, it is our wish that as many trees as possible be retained on this property. possible be retained on this property." Now, the city promised to maintain in perpetuity in its present location, the War Memorial. Perpetuity does not have an expiration date. I created with a professional urban designer, a fabulous, and I'm not saying that because it's an ego, fabulous plan to make this unique in the whole metro area. Then current mayor and council and DDA wouldn't allow me to present it. I have invited people who say they're all about green when it isn't green if you cut down all the trees to meet with me, and they say they show up and then they stand you up. They miss that manners class. I'm always glad to help people create this place that is unique because it is unique in all of metro Atlanta. Is it perfect? No. It's layers of civilization on top of each other that creates an interesting place. You want boring? Hey, we got surrounded by commodity construction everywhere. It's all looks the same. You could pick it up and put it in Tampa, or Milwaukee, or Phoenix. It all looks the same. Is it perfect here? No. I suggested a few things. You know, I've been in tourism and hospitality for 40 years, president of an international organization. I think I know my stuff about how to create experiences. Splash pad? We already have two spray grounds in one of those 28 parks that we have. You need a gathering space? This isn't Disney World. You can meet out here anytime you want. We're just not going to entertain you. You can entertain yourselves by putting down your phone. So I wanted to say thanks for a great city because everybody I've met this week, boy, they're from everywhere, and they're just so happy to live here. And I think before people complain, they need to show up, not just when they have a special interest.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Who would like to come up next? It's still early. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Marissa Pereira from the Vicarage Creek subdivision. As a Roswell citizen, I am extremely concerned about the lack of transparency in our city government. I clearly remember each council member here promising transparency when campaigning, though I must admit, I don't remember the mayor campaigning on that. I pray he is well, but it's rather curious that he's missed two open mic sessions in a row. As he pointed out at the presser on Friday, we should always have the ability to sit down and listen to one another even if we disagree. Out of numerous others, I've chosen three examples of lack of transparency. The first, while the narrative is that the Canton Street closure was just a trial, a decision was made to try it without the voice or knowledge of the people whose lives and livelihoods would be directly impacted. Ideas are great, but they need to be thoroughly vetted before they become decisions, temporary or not. Roswell City Government has rules and codes in place. A check the box or fly by the seat of our pants operation is not how we should be running Roswell. The mayor announced in his presser again on Friday that despite the fear, council wanted to move forward with Canton Street closure, and they had the political votes. I'm not sure which votes those were, but we elected you to enact the will of the people, not to substitute it for your own with political votes. Second, on May 2, 2022, the Roswell Transportation Advisory Commission was formed by resolution and unanimous vote to fulfill the mayor and council's campaign promise to the people of Roswell. While in May of this year, most of our TAC members resigned en masse in frustration because their recommendations weren't considered, one member remained. Roswell's website is scrubbed of all mention of our TAC as a commission, so presumably it's been dissolved. Per Roswell Code, section 2.6.11, I quote, "Any member may be removed with or without cause by a majority vote of the mayor and council," unquote. Per legal, if a commission is created by resolution, it is dissolved by resolution. If created by ordinance, it is dissolved by ordinance. There is no record of any vote taken to dissolve our TAC. Third, in the November 20, November 1, 2022, open mic forum, the mayor promised residents of Grimes Bridge Road that he and council would conduct a town hall and meet with the residents themselves. Nine months later, that still hasn't happened. This May 15, at the unveiling of Ros, RDOT's plans for traffic calming on Grimes Bridge Road, Councilwoman Hills told the press, and I quote, "The plan is far from a done deal. There's time to make adjustments and for us to go back to the drawing board and figure out some options." Two and a half months later, no one has heard anything about any alternative options. Mind you, our TAC had already conducted a town hall with the residents, but those recommendations were not in the plan presented. In the last Transportation Committee meeting, July 25, RDOT stated they are working with stakeholders. I'm not really sure who that is, but residents have not heard anything further on this project. Yet RDOT stated it's on schedule. Again, no transparency, no communication. In conclusion, transparency begets trust. We, the people of Roswell, expect and deserve it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Marissa. Who would like to come up next? Ms. Barnes? Or Mr. Sharp?
I'm K. Sharp. I live at 8635 Steeplechase Drive. First off, I want to acknowledge that the city council has done a good job with getting our fire and police brought up on the budget. And I've been here since 1983, and it's nice to have a full-time fire department. I applaud you for getting the money to the police department that are, we're now fully staffed. Just want to acknowledge the hard work the council members have done since you were elected to office. And I applaud your efforts to make Roswell the number one community in which to live in all the United States. I moved here in 1983, and I remember, I was so proud when U.S. News and World Report listed Roswell as one of the greatest places in the country to live. And I thought it, the city had a lot of charm and character, and I grew up in a small town in the Midwest, and Roswell still had a small-town feel at that time. Roswell has some rough-looking roads into and through our town. And I'm talking specifically about Holcomb Bridge Road, Highway 140, Alpharetta Highway and places, and to some extent, Georgia 400, where they come up through the community. I realize these thoroughfares are all state highways, and the Georgia Department of Transportation is responsible for caring for these roads. But I wonder if the city council could do something to make, hold the state accountable so they could at least clean up the trash off the side of the road. I mean, the people that are coming through Roswell and their residents of Cobb County and Gwinnett County and other places, the impression a lot of them get about Roswell is all this trash that's on the street. And Ann and I were recently in Italy and Switzerland, and I was struck by the fact how clean the places were where we went. And I don't know why, as Americans, we think it's okay to throw our trash out on the road. Until we figure out how to solve that problem, at least we have to start cleaning it up. I see a lot going on in the city center, but I don't see much improvement along Highway 140 corridor, especially from the Chattahoochee River over to Warsaw Road. And I'm kind of sensitive about that side of town because I remember moving here in 83 and having longtime West Roswell residents tell me, well, you're East Roswell. You're not really part of Roswell, which at the time was actually the truth because we hadn't been, hadn't been brought into the city yet. But I loved Roswell. My kids played on some of the sports teams here, and we loved the parks. So when it was time to vote for becoming part of the city, we wholeheartedly supported that. On another issue, some months ago, the city was paving streets in my neighborhood. Our home sits on a semicircle that loops off Steeplechase Drive and then back onto Steeplechase Drive. The big garbage trucks that the city's been using recently, recycle trucks, post office vehicles, and other cars and trucks use our service drive. There's only three homes on it, but there's a series of loops from the street back to the street where about half a dozen houses near ours are off the road. I asked the city to pave our driveway when they were out there, and they refused, saying it was city property. After that, we started getting letters from the city telling us, we need to sign a release holding the city harmless, or else we're going to have to pick up our trash, move our trash containers from the house out onto Roswell, out onto Steeplechase Drive, excuse me, or they wouldn't come on the, on our private. So it strikes me as retribution because we complained about the trucks tearing up our semicircle, and yet, when they want us to hold, hold the city harmless for any future claims against them. So I don't, I don't really think that's fair. It seems like, seems like retribution because we wanted to have the city fix the problem that we think the city's trucks caused. We're also told we should deal with waste management, which waste management's contracted by the city. I don't think we should have to. We should, we should be able to talk to the city. We were also told by the city attorney to file a claim, which Ann did in the form of an email, and we've not heard anything about that either. Peter Vanstrom came out and looked at our driveway a while back, and I'm not sure where that stands now, but just wanted to get that on record tonight. So thank you for hearing us here.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Rich, would you follow up with the Sharps? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Excuse me. Good evening, Mayor and Council. All in all, I think you do a really good job, and we do appreciate it. But on the original, the City Green, I like Ms. Russell was part of the original meetings and things on the City Green. And back then, nobody realized, or pretty people realized, none of this is in perspective. None of these plant, these pretty pictures and all this stuff, nothing's to scale. And like Mayor Wood back then was wanting all these different things on this, and when you start looking at it, it's basically the size of our town square. And you can't get all these things on here. So all these people out here want this City Green until you get some, some perspective and something to scale so you know what you're getting. Because all these pretty pictures are just pretty pictures. They don't have any thing, they don't have any, any bite or any, any substance to them. They're not for real. They're just for show. So they need to look at something of what we've got out here and look at perspective and scale before they start trying to get all excited about something that's really just a fantasy until it's, until it's real, and it's not real right now. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes.
Hello. My name is Lane Bristow. I need to fill out a card. I am a resident here in the historic area. As a person elected to the task force for Canton Street, I would like to thank all of you for appointing people who truly are in the middle of this issue. I know that it has been spread in the media that a lot of people are, are in favor of the Canton Street promenade, but it's been my pleasure to get to know each member of this task force on a personal level. And I can tell you that their opinions and where they stand is truly in the middle. And we are all open to information and open to hear what is presented. There are some positives, there are some negatives, but I truly thank you as a person elected, as chairperson of this, of this task force for putting such a wonderful group in front of us for us to work with. Contradictory to what the previous speaker said, I am a business who is directly in the middle, who is a Canton Street business. I am located directly across the heart, across from the heart of Roswell Park. So I am right in the midst of everything, and I do hear it on a daily basis. And I can tell you that our street is torn apart by the, the conflict that is happening. And I appreciate that you guys have given us such a wonderful group of people to work with. On a side note, if I can make one request, in reference to the, to the traffic on Canton Street in the mornings, we are dealing with a significant amount of, of delivery trucks who are pulling in front of my salon specifically. They are blocking the southbound lane completely when they make deliveries. These deliveries are taking up to 45 minutes to make, to happen. When I'm asking them, they are saying that they have no choice but to deliver in this area. It is causing a significant traffic jam for Canton Street, so I would ask whoever is in charge of that department to please look into that. But back to my original statement, I appreciate all of the work that mayor and city council has done to elect a task force that I truly feel is in the middle of this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we will follow up on the trucks blocking the street. I, I did see trucks behind, I don't know the name of that street back there by Gate City, so there's access for those. And it was a big straight truck that they can get back there, and I know East Alley as well, but we'll look into that. Thank you. Anybody else? It's still early. Ladies in the middle, please.
I think you're referring to Webb Street, aren't you? That, the street behind?
I'm sorry?
By Gate City, Webb Street?
It's perpendicular to Webb Street. It runs behind the.
Oh, the alley?
The Mamos extension.
Oh, the Mamos, okay. All right. Hi, I'm Marty Johnson. I live at 1144 Canton Street. I've been a resident of Roswell from moving from Birmingham for 11 years. Community is an essential element to grow a city as wonderful as Roswell, and we're letting other towns pull our residents to their farmer markets, farmers' markets, music venues, family gatherings. I'm a residential realtor and show and sell homes in Roswell, because that's my favorite place, but our surrounding cities as well. The other city greens are attractive draws for these purchasers and driving these families around our, our town other than Canton Street or Roswell Square. I can share, oh, we have a farmer's market, but it's up that little narrow road by the Presbyterian Church. But there's no centralized area to celebrate community. We came to this year's Memorial Day tribute, and it was a great turnout and a wonderful celebration. But my chair was lodged on a tree root, and I had to sit in a unique way on my chair or I would have fallen over. Having some kind of Roswell green area where we can gather and celebrate our residents, I think is very important. So building community is of the utmost. So please take to heart this request for a Roswell green. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else over here on the left side? Or my left, your right? Going once? Going twice? Okay, I think that we have heard from everybody that would like to speak. So since there are no more speakers, we're going to close the open mic portion of the meeting. Thank you again for being here tonight. And being that there are no other items, this mayor and council open forum meeting of July 31, 2023 is adjourned. Thank you.